Welcome to the Madawan Aberdeen Regional School District Committee of the Hall meeting on September 14, 2023. Time is now 6:30 PM. The New Jersey Open Meeting Law was enacted to ensure great public to advance notes of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or agreed on. In accordance with the provision of the SEC, the Madawan Aberdeen Regional School District Board of Education advertised his name on September 11, 2023 in the Asbury Park Press and the Star-Ledgers. This notice was sent to the municipal clerks of the borough of Madawan and the township of Aberdeen and the Madawan Aberdeen Public Library. The notice was also placed on the district's website. Can we please stand for the next question? Agent, to comply with United States of America, to the Republic of America, to the citizens, on a nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Ms. Case, can we please have roll call? Ms. Phylis?
Here.
Ms. Gershner?
Here.
Mr. Montone?
Here.
Ms. Powell?
Here.
Ms. Scott?
Here.
Ms. Brown?
Here.
Ms. Warrenke?
Ms. Martinez?
Here.
Mrs. Goldin?
Here.
Can I get a motion and a second to approve the special meeting minutes from September 5, 2023? All motion. Second. Roll call. Ms. Phylis?
Yes.
Ms. Gershner?
Yes.
Mr. Montone?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Martinez?
Yes.
Mrs. Goldin?
Yes.
Can I get a motion and a second to approve the correspondence to the board? Motion. All second. And we have a slight change to the agenda tonight. We are going to go into a quick executive session for about 15 minutes. So be it resolved that a closed session be convened for the purpose of discussing privacy, personnel, and attorney-client matters. The subject matter of these discussions will be disclosed to the public when the reason for confidentiality subsides. Although the board cannot guarantee it, the length of the executive session is estimated to be 15 minutes, after which the public meeting of the board shall reconvene and proceed with business. Action will take place. Can I get a motion and a second to enter executive session? All motion.
All second.
All favor?
Aye.
Can I get a motion? Sorry. Motion and a second to return to public session? All motion.
All second.
All favor?
Aye.
We're going to jump to superintendent's report. Ms. Perez.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, everyone. Just wanted to quickly say a few things. We had a wonderful, wonderful, great opening with students and staff. It was just wonderful to see our students begin their school year with smiles and seeing them with their friends and the teachers. And it was just amazing. So we had a wonderful opening. Special thank you to our operations and maintenance, our custodial staff for prepping the buildings for our students. Everybody was really, really happy. The floors looked great, the rooms were clean, everything was wonderful. So it was really exciting to start up this studio in a possible way. Thank you.
So just reiterating what Ms. Perez said, hope all of our students, our staff, our families had a wonderful first day of school, and we are off to a great start. We've had several of our schools have their back-to-school nights, several more to come in the next couple of weeks. In keeping with our focus on collaboration between schools, parents, and community, there are going to be some family nights coming up and workshops and events. So once we have those dates, we'll definitely share those out with the community. Our 18- to 21-year-old reach program, I know Ms. Perez had mentioned this in her community letter, but thought it was important to note again. It's open. Its new home is over at St. Clement's. The house in front of St. Clement's in Madawan. And this program supports our young adults with building independent skills, transitioning, and work experiences. So that's very exciting. Also, we're continuing to focus on mental health and wellness for our school and community through partnerships with the Y, Effective School Solutions, Dylan's Wings of Change, and most recently, the Enhancing School Mental Health Services Project through Rutgers University. As we've said in the past, safety and security of our schools is a top priority. Our second meeting will be on Tuesday, September 26, at 6:00 PM at the high school. And we encourage all community members, as many as possible, to come out and join because we really want people to have their questions answered so they have the information when it does come time to vote. Lastly, you may have seen the Madawan Aberdeen Educational Foundation, the president has the back-to-school nights, and there are flyers that are coming home in backpacks with more information. It's a fantastic nonprofit group that does award grants to our Mars staff for creative classroom projects that really do enhance our student learning. There's more information on the website too, in case your students did not come home with that. Moving on to the agenda, curriculum and instruction. Mr. Leibin.
Thank you. Good evening. Under curriculum instruction, we have one action item this evening, that's travel. Under non-action items, for the board to approve the regular action meeting, our consideration will be items B, 1 through 4. That concludes curriculum and instruction.
Student services, Mr. Leibin.
We're asking the board to take action on all of the student service agenda items. So we're asking the board to approve items 1, 2, and 3. That concludes student services.
Can I get a motion and a second to approve the agenda? All motion.
All second.
Okay. Personnel, Mr. Leibin.
Under personnel, we're asking the board for one action item to be approved tonight. On the board in front of you, you have the action item as a walk-in. So we're asking the board to approve the appointment as listed on the walk-in item. That's item number one. Then we're asking the board not for action this evening, but to consider for action at the regular action meeting. We'd be approving items A, B, C, 1 through 11, D, 1 through 6. That includes personnel.
Thank you. Can I get a motion and a second to approve the agenda? All motion.
All second.
Policy, Mr. Leibin.
We recommend to the board for approval tonight. This is a second reading and adoption of policy 2560.31. So that's second reading and adoption. That concludes policy.
Thank you. Can I get a motion and a second to approve the agenda? All motion.
All second.
Finance, Ms. Case.
Good evening. We'll be looking to take action on item number one for approval if we'll use waivers in the educational space for clipboard strafement. And also additional for clipboard. And then at the RAM, on September 28, we'll really take action on items 2 through 13.
Thank you. Can I get a motion and a second to approve the agenda? All motion. Second. Any questions or comments from board members on agenda items? Ms. Powell?
Okay. So for the finance agenda, the board goals, is that, I think, or is that still under discussion? This is just for the COW and then we'll update with the RAM. Okay, thank you.
Yes, so those are just placeholders for now, coming out of the retreat, and then the next round of the RAM will have the revised.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? And that brings us to public comments. So before we jump into public comments, just wanted to say one thing. I know, made a statement basically, coming out of the last meeting, we had members of the public here, last meeting, that did come to discuss gender identity and expression. And we wanted to emphasize that we, as a district, believe that each and every student does deserve to feel safe physically and mentally. They deserve to feel valued, respected, and a sense of belonging. And we're committed to supporting all of our students. That means being inclusive of every student who needs this. At the same time, we're committed to being partners with our parents and encouraging communication between them and their students. We're confident in the expertise of our counseling staff and our excellent teachers, who we believe have only the student's best interests at heart. They support our students with compassion, they listen, they encourage students to talk to their parents. We know it's a sensitive issue for the public, and we do want to work with the community to make sure that we are meeting the needs of every family in district. Similar to how we approached the curriculum last year, we encouraged the community to give input and to be involved. And we were very transparent in that we had a community meeting where the community could come, ask questions. We presented before we actually approved anything and before we moved forward. So we want to take a similar approach. With the curriculum, we did review state guidelines and requirements, and then we tailored them to our community's specific needs. And I think that's, quite frankly, I think that's what's so great about our district, is when we hear there's new guidelines or regulations, you know, we do what we're required to do by law, but then we also try to tailor it to meet what we see is going on in district. And we try to have open discussion. We ask our community input before we make decisions. So similar approach is what we'd like to take moving forward. We always do what's in the best interest of our students in our district. Safety and education are our top priorities, and we will continue to support and advocate for all of our students. With that, we're going to move to public comment. Actually, do any board members have anything they want to say before I jump to public comments? Public comments on agenda items and additional matters. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on matters of interest to the school community. Individuals wishing to speak must state their name and municipality residence. Comments are limited to three-minute duration, but an individual may speak a second time after all others who wish to speak on the topic have been heard. All statements should be directed to the board president, and no participant may address or question board members individually. All speakers are requested to express themselves in a civil manner with due respect for the dignity and privacy of others whose legal rights may be affected. Please note, while it is not the board's intention to stipulate comment on matters of legitimate concern, the public should be aware that if their statements violate the rights of others under the law of defamation or invasion of privacy, they may face personal liability to the injured party. If speakers are uncertain of the legal ramifications of their comments, the board urges them to see guidance beforehand from their own legal advisor. Anybody from the public?
Hello? Hi, I'm sorry. I'm Alice Marie. I'm from Colts Neck, and I want to come back to continue what I started last time just because I think there was some misunderstanding about it. But I did want to talk about 57-56, and you just brought it up again. So I thought it would be a good time to continue that conversation. What I was trying to say last time, and I may be wrong what you're saying, that you're going to support your students, and the guidelines, it's guidance policy, it's not mandatory, from my understanding. But it recommends that if the student is, if people feel the student is going to have a problem at home, or they're afraid to tell their parents, that the parents will not be notified right away. And I think this could happen if a child is afraid because they get a bad grade on a test and many other reasons for the child not wanting to tell the parents. So we support some parental notification because a parent really is the best advocate for that child in a situation with 57-56 and the transgender issues. Now, I was telling my story last time that I was a tomboy growing up, and I even dressed like a boy. Even up until age eight, I really kind of thought I was kind of cool to be like a boy. But my parents always affirmed that I was a girl, and there was never this narrative that's coming down from the state. So I end up to be a perfectly healthy woman or girl as a child. I mean, I put a dress on when I went to school, but I played with rocks and... And these things were normal in my childhood. There's plenty of people that were tomboys. So the narrative coming along, even at a very young age, we're kind of letting children make the rules here. And I'm concerned, if the teachers are affirming that child, someone needs to tell them the truth. I think if somebody did that to me and said, "Oh, you could be a boy," that would be crazy. I would have gone crazy. And if you really can't change someone's biology, you're always going to have the XX and that XY. But you can help to change their mind, and the simple of not affirming their gender identity is what I would hope that the teachers would support. The counseling, I don't know where the counselors are coming from, but we're hearing lots of stories from across the country, the same thing, that we need to worry about suicide for these children if they can't be what they want to be. And the gender, and we're finding out that if you go down that path of trying to change that gender, it's going to be really destructive to that child. They get into, 45%, the girls go eventually take puberty blockers, which leads to sterilization, and then 45% go into actual affirmation surgery if they go down the path of being a transgender, the girls in 28 with the boys. So it's a big concern.
Three minutes.
I'm sorry. Okay. It's just a big concern. I'll probably speak then because I want to say something else. But I thank you. I thank you so much for listening.
Thank you.
Good evening. Anne Finney, father of five, retired military. And I told my son out of public school a couple of years ago because of first...
I'm sorry, what town? Sorry.
Aberdeen.
Aberdeen.
Partly because of the protocols for COVID and what they did to our children in public school, the masking, stand under blue dot. I'm not going to go into any further on that. But to roll out of the LGBT curriculum had me greatly concerned. I was fortunate to listen to a presentation that laid out what the state was putting into the curriculum as, again, curriculum guidance. And that really concerned me. And I did not even know about policy 57-56. And I would like the state, again, as a previous speaker. It's policy guidance, it was written by Strauss Sessmey, and it was rolled out in the dark of night. And to this day, most of your parents don't know what is in it. And I would encourage all of you to do so. Hanover had a court hearing on September 6, and in that, the judge questioned the district attorney or the assistant district attorney about the legal enforcement of, again, legally binding or law. And the district attorney made the admission that, no, it wasn't mandatory, nor did it have the force of law. And that's why Hanover took the old staff to rescind policy 57-56. But I would submit to you that it never should have been approved or adopted by any school board in this state. Okay? And I hope if you have not read it, you will, and I hope that all the parents or anybody listening to this will go read it, and they will understand how it contravenes parental rights and traditional law, how it is harmful and should be viewed under the lens of child endangerment laws. And if anybody thinks that all students may participate in sports according to their gender identity and use the locker rooms and shower rooms and compete women's sports or vice versa is fair or reasonable, I would just be astounded if anyone reasonable person really believes that is reasonable. Same with bathroom policies. They're designed for biological sex. And yet, we're saying all students may use the bathroom facility according to their gender identity. What has our world come to? After 30 years in the military, I saw how our requirements for recruits continually got the standards lowered so they could get enough people through.
If you could just wrap up the thought, sorry.
So what I'm saying is you need to focus on education, okay? We can't even get high school graduates to qualify for military or federal service, and they're getting all this woke ideology. I would love to comment in about 30 minutes on items 2 and 3, which is nothing but code words and buzzwords for this woke ideology and replacing equality with equity.
Thank you. I'm sorry. You can come back after everyone else has finished.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Carolyn. Can you hear me? My name's Carolyn Mack, and I live in Madawan. I just wanted to give you a flavor for what happened at the meeting in Hanover on Monday night. We were there, and it was well-attended within the auditorium, which I'd say probably, if you were going to guess, about 250 to 300 people there. The vast majority, I'm going to say about 95% of them, were opposed to 57-56. I'm also opposed to it. They unanimously voted it down. It's my hope that as other school boards vote on it, that they also will vote it down. I think there's a lot of good reasons to do that. I think that any new policy that encourages this new ideology that somebody can actually change their gender, which defies science and truth, like Alice that before me were born with either XX gender or XY. Nothing we do can change that. Mutilation surgeries do not change it. And many, many children who have those later regret it. We're seeing that Chloe Cole is a great example of that. She had a surgery as, I think, a 13-year-old. And now she is really crusading for children that they would not succumb to the gender identity woke teaching that is, that's kind of taking over for schools. So I'm sure eventually you're going to end up voting on 57-56. I just encourage you to look at the damage that is coming from the ideology that's coming into the schools. It is not good for children, extremely confusing. I was a tomboy too, as a little girl. I had my own gun and holster and cowboy hat and lived in Florida, and we played Yankees and Rebels, the girls and the boys. If somebody had suggested to me that maybe I was really a boy, it could have ruined my life, I'm sure. So I think that's a common story for girls. And I just wanted to tell you about a recent Monmouth poll that was done. 77% surveyed field of middle and high schools should be required to notify parents if their child wants to begin identifying as a different gender. 77%. And this poll was done August 10th to 14th of this year with 814 New Jersey adults. They also are opposed to boys using girls' restrooms and boys participating in girls' sports. They think it should be based on gender, not a fluid-changing gender identity. So thank you. The fellow members, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, guys. Everyone remembers me, right? So my name is Cindy. I am an Aberdeen resident. So let me, I don't want to get deep into the weeds on this policy because, you know, we're going to all disagree. But I really strongly feel that any policy that has an adult keeping a secret from their parents is not a good policy. And I have to be honest with you. I feel like the state has put you guys and put the teachers and the admin in a horrific position because now they are telling you that you have to enforce, again, a policy that says the adults need to keep secrets. You can say whatever word you want. It's a secret, honey. It's a secret. Okay? You need to keep a secret from the person who carried the child nine months, 24 hours of labor, emergency C-section, a week in the hospital. And now I'm sending my child to a school where maybe there's going to be secrets. And I am a little concerned about that. But let me get to the second issue. So I recently went to open a school. I broke it?
No.
Sorry. Okay. So I recently went to a PUP lab. I'm a director of training at my company, so I'm used to speaking loud to a bunch of adults. So I recently went to open a school at MAMS. Mr. Van Horn, very nice guy. I really liked his opening remarks. And I have to be honest with you. There was a lot of safe spaces, like, "I want your child to feel safe." "I want your child to feel emotionally safe." And I would like someone to tell me, "Wearing MAMS is unsafe." So that way I can make sure, if I'm a good, avoid those unsafe spaces, honey, because it's concerning. To me, it's like kind of psychobabble-ish, almost, like, "I want your child to feel safe." I'd like my child to feel safe. Like, I might prefer you not to tell my child that I want you to feel safe. They're safe already. I also heard a couple of, you know, like, "I want to be your child's friend." Ugh, yeah, I really don't want a 40-year-old adult to be my child's friend. And that's just maybe my opinion. But I'd rather, you know, my kid come to school, learn reading, writing, math, social studies, and then come home and play with a bunch of 12-year-olds. I'm really not looking for a friend for my child. And that was just me. I mean, maybe there's other parents who are okay with it, but it made me cringe a little, I'm not going to lie. Okay? So I just wanted to let you guys know just some concerns I had. I kind of felt like we didn't have this last year in MAMS, and we are having it this year. And Ms. Perez, I am having major trouble with Van Horn and opting out of the sex ed. So wherever she is, can you guys please get in touch with me? Because I'm kind of like over it already. I leave this desk. All right? Thank you very much.
I just want to say one thing. Your first point regarding reaching out to state legislators and the TOE is a very good point because I think it does start there and the number of things, you know. Talked on either side of it, quite frankly. I think that's because a lot of it does come down. Anyone else from the public?
I'm guessing you could probably hear me without a microphone. Allison Friedman, if you don't remember me, Aberdeen. I come with two issues or two things to say. The first is thank you, Mrs. Spohli, for the shout-out to the foundation. We've had a tremendous amount of energy that we have seen with the foundation, that you've just been getting into thinking for creative ideas. I want to thank Ms. Gershner for helping out one night at the tables. I want to thank Mrs. Spohli, Ms. Phielis, for thanking the volunteers that were with us, helping out. I appreciate it. It's not just my time, it's ours and theirs. Hopefully, everybody got their fundraiser back at this point, if you haven't. They were all stapled, and I think it was something like 3,000 staples. Stapled, there at home, we have been known. And I hope everybody goes to the fundraiser, no matter how you feel.
That being said, that changes my, to my other issue. A policy that everybody is discussing has been on the books in Madawan, Aberdeen, I believe, since 2019, if not before. I think that was the last read. It is not a new policy. It was not a concern until someone or some people decided to politicize it. It is a policy that is in line and in conformity with New Jersey statutes, with federal HIPAA. There are reasons why, as much as we as parents would like to know all the things about our kids, we don't or we can't. You can take a child abuse situation, and you can recognize why a child wouldn't want to tell their mom that their father or uncle or their brother is abusing them, but they would need to be able to feel safe at their school to report it to them. There are a lot of those reasons that happen out there. The idea that something that has been in existence for years has suddenly become a problem. When you read the policy, when you look at the intent behind the policy, it really is in line with your board goals, which is to make everybody feel secure and to feel safe. This allows people to learn about each other. And now, at the beginning of the year, I kind of enjoy this time because as a Jew, I have people asking me what Rosh Hashanah is about. And it gives me that opportunity to educate them and to share that knowledge. And maybe they weren't scared or nervous, maybe they didn't know how to say hi or what to say, and now they do, so they're more comfortable because now they know to say "Happy New Year" on Rosh Hashanah and to say "Have a quick and easy fast" on Yom Tov. And those things, those barriers can't be broken down unless we take the time to learn about each other, to learn to accept one another. And if the parents are genuinely concerned that their child is hiding something from them, then that has a bigger implication within that family unit. And the policy speaks to working with the child so that the child works with the school counselors so that the parents and the child can communicate together and work through the problems. and work through the problems again. The policy does not say, oh, look, playing with frogs, so he must be a boy. Let's all treat him like a, her like a boy or change the pronoun. It's not about hiding it.
I'm in three minutes?
Yes.
So the policy as it stands is in line. Doesn't mean that you don't have to tweak it. We've done that time and time again. I want to say thank you again for the shout-out. And I hope that when you do talk about the policy, you'll open it up to talk about it.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Casey Boroka, Farmingdale, President of Madawan Education Association. I just want to echo again. Obviously, this policy has been out for a long time and we have not heard a single concern about any staff member attempting to convince any child to be something or not be something. So I just want to put that out there, that we're working in hypotheticals. And as I said last time we met, that should something present itself, I have no doubt in my mind that this community, in the way that it handled the health standards and how everybody came together, we had different viewpoints. But in the end, we came up with something that the community, not everybody necessarily agreed with it, but something that was in the best interest of children. And I think we might be creating something that's not actually here yet. That doesn't mean that it couldn't happen. But I also echo what Ms. Friedman said, that there could be another dynamic on the home front where if a child isn't sharing at home, what is the reason for that? Or if a parent isn't seeing that at home, what's happening? But I, and correct me if I'm wrong on this, but I do believe that the policy does allow for, if a child is ever going to have the intent of self-harm or anything like that, parents can be notified. So it's not as though parents are being kept in the dark for everything. And I will speak personally for myself, not as the president of the union. I think there also should be likely some age appropriateness to this. Where if you have a high schooler who, yes, still an adolescent, but a more developed brain than a, say, fifth grader, there may be need to be some age appropriateness in parent communication that you may not need with a high schooler. And the example I would give is we have 18-year-old students that are more than welcome to sign themselves out of school if they want to. Are those parents supposed to be notified? Because under FERPA, they're not allowed to be. They have privacy rights. So I think there's a whole lot here that we need to consider. And I think we're doing a good job. I really do. So if there are concerns in other towns, I understand those concerns. But by the same token, I think we're doing a good job. And I think we work together and we've proven that we can.
My name is Jennifer Woodruff, and I am a resident of Morganville and a business owner for over 30 years in Madawan. I just want to make a comment about the gentleman who talked earlier. One of the reasons this has come to a head, this 57-56 policy, is because people didn't know about it. When it came out, people are fooled. So it's not as though, all of a sudden, it's like a problem is because no one really knew about it. I think a lot of the teachers didn't know about it. The teachers I talked to who are, they don't, they still don't. A lot of them still don't know what I'm talking about. I think they think I'm making it up. Another thing is, this is a special policy. You already have anti-bullying and anti-discrimination in the schools. This is something special and unique. It seems like it's already being taken care of. So I don't understand why a new policy has to go into effect for something that, something like this when the parents should be notified. Anyhow, more importantly, thank you very much for your service, your time, your dedication. It is really appreciated. You spend many hours, personal hours, doing what you're doing. And right now, you don't have to hear flack from, and I know it's not any of your doings, you're getting it from the state, but I just have to say, do my say. I'm speaking on behalf of children who are vulnerable and do not have a voice. We need to protect all of God's little children, including those who are confused about their gender identity. However, adopting policy 57-56 is not the right way and will only lead to more confusion, hostility, and increased bullying and sexual harassment. The schools in New Jersey have been deceived in believing that this policy is mandatory, whereby it was only guidance, and I put that in quotes. I typically regard guidance as something positive to follow. Whether the 57-56 is a guide to follow or is mandatory is bizarre and should be disturbing to every parent. We send our children to school to learn the three arts, not to coddle them and provide affirmation when they are emotionally confused. Why the government believes they have the right or the qualifications to handle emotional needs of the children, particularly in an area that is new, where there is no basis of truth and where there is no specific training, is beyond me. The fact that Marlboro and three other school boards were sued because they followed their hearts and the wishes of the majority of the parents by objecting to this 57-56 policy because of its absurdity is unconscionable. Unconscionable. I'm not saying anything. We are teaching children to lie to their parents. We are telling children that it's okay to be disillusioned and that others have to kowtow to them. I don't know when children became in charge and made the rules for our schools. Gender dysphoria has risen by 4,000% in past five years. This is not an accident. This is by design. TikTok, Snapchat, Instagram, they're all promoting this gender confusion. And I truly believe that the drivers of this movement are sinister people who financially are backed by entities. They want to take control of our children at young age when they are impressionable and when they are vulnerable. This 57-56 policy causes division within the schools and adverts sterile relationships between a parent and a child.
I'm sorry, we just need to...
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
You think I'm finished?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you again for listening to me and for your service.
I just wanted to add on, a lot of people said a lot of really good things. I wanted to say something just to comment on the four years that everybody thinks, oh, it's four years, then it should be acceptable. All of a sudden, we're noticing, well, two of those years were COVID, where we really were focused on COVID and then having to teach from Zoom messages to half the school for the next year. So people weren't really thinking about all these other things that were going on. So remember that. And some of the school boards that had realized it have already had time and voted new people in who would support the parental rights. So those are the ones that you're seeing that it may change. Otherwise, it's very hard to make change within that short period of time. So I just wanted to go along to say that between 80 and 90%, 87, 88%, according to the Toronto 2021 study, 11 different studies say that children go back to their gender of birth by the time they're 18. So what my concern is, that I'm actually a teacher in a high school. And I don't think it's fair for teachers are supposed to say pronouns, they're supposed to use the pronouns. If a child is in the class, which I do have, and they're obviously a girl, and I'm supposed to say he. So I will try to use the person's last name, the person's first name. But it is really not fair and it's not right to do to the kids. I had this conversation with another teacher who's going along with this whole ideology. And she says, well, it's really not our place to say anything to that child. Okay, well, I ask you, if you have a child that is standing on the edge of a bridge and is going to jump off, because these are the things that these drugs are doing. Lupe, they use to give to sex offenders, and it sterilizes them. Chloe Cole, who she talked about, there's many people, there's a list, and it's drawing up to 10% who are transitioning right now, you're saying. So these things are permanently damaging them, and they are children. That's why we're adults. That's why the parents need to be notified. But think about your staff, the wonderful staff that you said you have. They should be affirming the great qualities of girls and the great qualities of boys. And let them know that this is normal for children to dress like boys and to feel like boys. Doesn't mean they can actually change it. They're in for a world of pain if they go along that path. So if someone's going to jump off the bridge, I'm going to say, please. I don't want to say, go ahead because you feel like it. Because this is all based on feelings. If it's a medical reason, then so be it. But the policy says it doesn't have to have any medical reason, just what the child feels like. So if the state gives us something that is wrong and that's morally wrong, we need to say, what are we going to do about it? Are we going to be like sheep and go along in that path and do whatever they tell us to do? There's a point that we have to recognize that this is going to be destructive to the kids. All right. Well, thank you again for listening.
Thank you.
Just really quickly. Tyler Clemente jumped off a bridge and died because he was afraid of being outed to his friends. And that's what created the hip policy. Kids have a right to explore who it is they want to be, and the policy provides for counseling. Not counseling to become one thing or the other, but counseling on how to learn their feelings, understand them, and communicate with them. It's not a made-up fiction. It's not propaganda. Children kill themselves because they are so worried about being who they are. And this board, this district, has never allowed that to happen. And it's something that I'm proud of as a parent. I'm proud of as somebody who continually volunteers for this district. And again, I thank you for setting those board goals.
Honestly, it's really hard for me to get my arms around how we could even be having this discussion. I hope every one of you board members has actually read 57-56. And this thing about, oh, it's been on the books for four years stuff is nonsense. Because most of you know, you didn't read it until recently, when it became an issue. And I would like to know if it was actually voted on and adopted or if it was rubber stamped because somebody said it's mandatory because they, it was incorrectly and erroneously marked as mandatory.
Every policy is voted on, but I believe the last time was 2019. So pretty, just about every...
So it's really astounding to me that school boards across the state would actually vote to adopt this policy in its form as guidance, as policy guidance. And they didn't even edit it to protect parental rights, stand up for parental rights, protect the children from what is egregious. What's in that policy? Matter of fact, I can read a couple things. And oh, by the way, I'd like to point out that more data as it comes in is going to show more conclusively that these young kids are becoming disillusioned after all the social influences and encouragement and affirmation with no questions. That's when they're becoming suicidal. And by the way, I know a little bit about that because I had a son who committed suicide. And it makes me angry that they like to throw these fear-mongering things out to detract us. I would like to also know what the motivation is for this policy because if you evaluate it, it doesn't help anybody and certainly doesn't help kids that are suffering from gender dysphoria. And if you look up gender dysphoria, it is categorized as a mental illness by every medical authority. In policy 57-56, there's words, statements such as, "Each student has chosen." Okay? So the kids are choosing. And I'd like to know where the idea of a seven or eight-year-old is of what his new gender identity is. Okay? Based on a deeply held sense of gender. We're talking K through eight, not K through 12. You think that an 18-year-old has the mental ability to make life-changing decisions regarding gender? These young kids aren't even going to know how many genders there are. In the definition itself, it says how many, you know, gender more closely with their deep-seated feelings than their biological gender. So it implies that their biological gender is a real thing, but then they can be anything they want.
I'm sorry, it turns up.
Cisgender, derogatory term. Student-centered. Parental consent not required. I'm not going...
Thank you.
Parents need, parents really need to read this. Parents need to be aware, and they'll be in here. They'll be coming in here. You don't have a problem now, sir, because people don't know what the hell is going on. Thank you.
Just to correct, Madam President, I was not saying a problem with parents. I was saying a problem with teachers attempting to turn boys into girls and girls into boys. That was my point.
Understood. Anyone else? Then we are going to take, sorry. We're going to take action on agenda items. We have curriculum instruction A, student services 133, personality walk-in item, policy second read, and finance number one. Ms. Viles?
Yes.
Ms. Gershner?
Yes.
Mr. Montone?
Yes.
Ms. Pell?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Farrell?
Yes.
Ms. Martinez?
Yes.
Mrs. Spohli?
Yes.
Any unfinished business from board members?
Yes.
Ms. Viles?
Hi. I just wanted to give an update on the cultural awareness committee, where we're at. We've been meeting regularly and we've put together a draft that will be ready for review for the board by the round meeting. But it's really a calendar of events, of observances, of religious holidays, reflecting our community and those who observe the different holidays and things like that in our community that we have to be aware of when we, when our schools are planning nighttime events. So it is a calendar with dates and a little bit of information about each of those holidays and observances so we can understand each other a little bit better and why we can't have a night event this night even though I don't celebrate that holiday and all of those things. And in addition, it advises that no homework is assigned on those nights of the holidays with anything to be due the next day to really respect each other. And going along with that, that if there are any practices for sports going on that night, that no one can be penalized or made to feel bad about observing their holiday with their family as opposed to attending for sporting event.
Thank you. And with the addition of our Director of DEI, the diversity, equity, and inclusion, I think that will be helpful too in terms of talking to staff, talking to Director of Athletics, talking to the coaches, talking to the children. Like, I think he will have a very active role or could as well. I know a number of questions did come up this week because we do have holidays coming. So I think we'll be talking to Mr. Tibersey at some point, right?
I spoke with him today. I can give an update to the board.
Sure, yeah.
So I spoke to Mr. Tibersey. He did share with me that Friday and Saturday, there are no sporting events and no games. And this actually was established last fall, went through last school year as well. And there are neighboring districts who are following the same policy.
Why this Thursday and Friday?
Right.
One Friday and Saturday?
Do you want to go into the holiday? To share? It's a Jewish observance of Rosh Hashanah. So sporting events will be in attendance or offered to a specific member of our population that celebrates that holiday.
President, this, you know, also as a member of the holiday committee, I was tasked with researching the religious breakdowns represented in our community. And I just found it really interesting, honestly, to see, you know, what a variety, what a large and widely diverse community we have. And therefore, we were able to help that shape the list of holidays that makes sense, ones that some of us may not be familiar with, based on...
And so education on that, I think, is critical because I heard this week that, are there really that many kids?
Right.
So I think that's very good that you guys have said that.
It's been very interesting.
There really are that many.
Yes, there really are that many.
So part of our project is to really teach about that.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Any other, yeah?
I don't know if this is the perfect time to just, of course, I just wanted to share with you that as one board member, and I think I can speak for some of the others, we have that policy, 57-56. And as, just one... And just wanted to confirm that, as far as I know, staff are not directed to actively suggest to students that they can be transgender, and that staff are directed to contact parents if they perceive that a child is suffering from a mental health illness. And that, and I just wanted to remind the public that we had a really great, large community discussion related to sex ed curriculum last year, and I hope that we can continue to have collaborative conversations, multi-meeting. And because out of that came curriculum revisions that were available to the public in a very public way. And kids, as Ms. Santora mentioned, that, you know, also a very public process to opt out of something if you're not comfortable with it. And so I just wanted to, I know the elephant in the room that we were talking to, some folks that are from other communities. Please check us out, Horn.
Absolutely. Read our policies on our website, not what's being sent, you know, as this is what the state says or what the rest of South S E says. We revise our policies locally. We tailor our policies locally. You're in central Jersey, things are a little diverse, and lots of opinions here. And I just, I hope that people remember that.
And I think the comprehensive health policy is a great example of that, because when we revised that policy for our district, we actually looked at a number of other districts, and they were cookie cutter. And we made sure ours was different and tailored to what we thought we needed here in district and the concerns we were hearing from the public. So I think we do do a good job at that, and, you know, we can talk more as we proceed forward on this policy and others that we feel are a concern. Thank you. Any other new business? With that, we're going to enter into our second executive session. Be resolved that a closed session be convened with the purpose of discussing privacy, personnel, and internal client matters. The subject matter of these discussions will be disclosed to the public when the reasons for confidentiality subsides. Although the board cannot guarantee it, the length of the executive session is estimated to be 20 minutes, after which the public may of the board till reconvene and pursue the business. Action will not take place. Can I get a motion and a second to enter executive session?
On motion.
On favor?
Aye.